Your council meeting on May 23rd, 2022. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven o'clock and ask that everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Normally, we have student representatives that help us here on council, but they're both absent today, or at least not here at this time. So can I ask the students in the audience to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We'll follow you.
I am the United States of America. As to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and just.
Good job. Thank you very much. Yep. Dan, how are you doing? Good. Please to call the roll.
Yes.
Here.
Fisher, absence. Griffin, here. Carter, here.
President. Here. Absolute this time. Yep. And Donna, everyone knows Donna is okay. She just had an exposure to her family, so she's staying away from the air. Okay, item C tonight on the agenda is approval of the meeting minutes from our work session on May 9th. And state council meeting on May 9th. By cousins, second by Griffin. Thank you both. All, anything to note on the meeting minutes? Jamie? Anybody else on council? Accountants on the notes. Zach?
Page 1D. I believe that should be fire station location at 8140.
Ah, yes. Good catch.
For the title.
Yeah, good catch. Thank you. The letter is D to F. There's mention A in German. What minor stuff? Yes. Yes. No problem. Okay, no further comments. Please call the roll to approve the minutes.
Carter? Yep. Yes. Griffin? Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries. All sets of minutes are approved. We're down to pre-arranged participation. This is where we have some guests, some elementary students from Wiley. Who would like to do the introductions this evening? You're welcome to come up to the podium. We have the slideshow up on the screen. We have it in our packets. You're all welcome to come up if you would like.
Alright, well, so here today are Madison, Ami, Jensen, Lucy, and Mia. Two of our friends from Vegas. I'll be filling in for them. And so we've just been paying pretty close attention to a trash problem that we've been having at Wiley mostly because we've been spent outside this year because of COVID. And then people got really into it, and so we started looking at trash on board for a while. We didn't want to conclude this whole part first. Okay. They have certain slides.
Can you speak a little louder so I can hear you a little clearer, please? Or you can come over to the microphone if you want. It's a great experience. Thank you so much.
This is trash in a storm drain in front of our school. There's another photo taken after some other kids in our class stuck their hands in and cleaned up the storm drain. This is two full trash bags that were collected around the playground. It was surprising to see this much trash on our playground and that many people didn't care about the environment. We are concerned about our playground and nature a lot, and we are worried what will happen to it. This is Erin in the Trash Patrol Program. She made this description of what the Trash Patrol does. Everybody in the Trash Patrol Program really cares about the environment, and we hope you do too.
It's real.
Excellent.
This is a sign-up sheet we made for the Trash Patrol Program. We have fourteen people and ten signatures, and we also designed this logo. This is all the trash we've collected from Champion Skill. We found a lot more trash than we thought. Some of us decided to move the trash can to places where it's neat. We saw a lot of trash in one area, but it wasn't a trash can. Then we moved it again, and turned it into better things.
Page 12.
This is us when we moved the trash. Because people, people just keep throwing the trash on the ground. Walk to the middle creek along the water to water. This trash can was right by the entrance to the trail by the forest lawn cemetery. We loved that people were picking it up after their dog and using the trash can, but we didn't like that it was overflowing and that they're burning up trash cans. We saw this trash can by the playground next to the water. We were on it because compared to some of the other ones, it was empty and unused. But we were happy that people saw the trash. This is us picking up trash from the little forest area. In this little tiny area, we found a lot of trash. These are pictures of plastic bags filled with rusty metal, glass bottles, and car parts. This is a picture of pollution in the wetlands. It shows that people either don't care and are throwing the trash off the trail, or it's blowing out of trash cans and people's pockets. We were walking and picking up trash, and we saw this random metal piece. We think it belongs to a car and looked like someone had a car accident a long time ago. We emailed Justin Ryer, the Dexter City manager, and he said that spot where we found all the random parts used to be a dumping ground. We were walking and picking up trash. We found a baby doll next to all the car parts. Really creepy. This is our classmate, Yubica, who did her fashion project about how plastic is bad for the world. Walk on the blocks to tell me stuff that's missing out where we need another trash can. This is the red pin point where we want a trash can added because trash comes from nearby local restaurants, like N W Dexter. A trash can there would be helpful to the city because it is easy to access and it is close to nearby park.
We've got some speeches slash essays that they've been working on about why it's important and why it would be helpful to have one more trash can.
I think we'll see what we can do.
That would be awesome.
Can you tell us your names again, please?
I'm Ami.
Ami?
I'm Madison. I'm Mia.
You all should be commended for your good work. Thank you for keeping our community clean. I have a question. Is it only boys, only girls, or is it clean up, right?
No.
And I'm sure you dress like this about school every day, right? No.
I bet it was the really old car parts probably always there. You used to muck around back in those woods, right?
Alright, so I'm filling in for Sulee.
I was going to make the road to Borcher more environmentally friendly and prevent plastic in Michigan's water. At the border to border chair, we saw that there's a lot of trash, not just in the trash cans, but on the grass. We think we need at least one more trash can at the border to border chair. Think it should be placed next by the ramp, next to the bridge. We'd really like it if people tried their best to put their trash in the right place.
Some people put trash that cannot be recycled in recycling bins. We learned from Mr. Ryer that there used to be recycling bins on the B2B trail, but people put things that couldn't be recycled in recycling bins. It made it so none of the trash there could be recycled.
How we can add the water to water change cleaners to reusable items like, and also run to the plastic cell. Glass plates are reusable, plastic plates instead of paper plates. Fabric bags instead of plastic bags. Usable backpacks or bags instead of plastic bags that most people use as swabs. Glass cups instead of plastic cups. Usable water bottles instead of plastic water bottles. Metal jars instead of paper or plastic jars.
Doing this would make the world, not just Dexter, cleaner, healthier, and a better environment for people, animals, and plants.
What you can do to make regular try to use less electricity, use less water, plant trees, pick up trash that you see. Don't waste food, use items, no littering because cause pollution and spreads useless oil.
What you should not do, litter, put trash in a recycling bin that cannot be recycled, waste food, use one-use items. Not cleaning up after yourself, not recycling paper if you don't need it, keep the light on when you need it. So you should turn the light off.
Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming. You're all great examples for our community.
Hi, I'm Mia Ba.
And I'm Lucy Meek.
We are fourth graders at Wiley Elementary School. We are here to talk about why we should put trash in the right bin.
In our hometown of Dexter, Michigan, nature is getting hurt because of our people, because we're not putting trash in the right bin. That's a big problem because we love all animals and plants. Plastic bags and masks get tangled up in pretty things like flowers and bushes. One time, I was picking up trash and I saw a bush with flowers on it, but it looked ugly because there were plastic bags and there were granola wrappers in the bush, too. One reason why, one reason we need to put trash in the right bin is because if we don't, it makes our hometown look ugly. It makes it look like no one cares about it. For an example, sometimes there are piles of trash in the same spot, and that spot was meant to be pretty. Also, in our school, Wiley, we have a school garden, but people just throw throw garbage such as masks, chip bags, plastic bags, gum wrappers, and candy wrappers, get thrown in there instead of going in a trash can. Luckily, our class created a trash to help take care of that problem.
Another reason we need to put trash in the right bin is because it kills animals. In the book Animal Neighbors, Doug by Stephen Savage, we learned that ponds and lakes that have been polluted by household waste, which is leftover food and other trash, and agricultural waste, which includes poisons that are supposed to kill plants, which seeps through the dirt and goes into the storm drains. Ponds and lakes also get polluted by industrial waste, which is waste that comes from any factory by water or rivers. There's a factory in Flat Rock, Michigan, that makes metal and had, and had an oil leak from underground. It is going into the Huron River. This can harm wildlife. We also learned that all of these things can poison ducks and other animals. Dangerous objects that are being dumped into ponds by people can cause injuries.
Another reason why we need to put trash in the right bin is because it kills the fish. An example is, I was looking at a picture of almost eating plastic, and one picture was a fish that died from microplastics, microplastics, which are small pieces of plastic that can be only seen by a microscope. Also, if somebody caught a fish that had ate a lot of plastic and you ate that fish for dinner, all that plastic that the fish ate, you would eat too, and you could get really sick.
The Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, estimates that seventy-five percent of the garbage in America is actually recyclable, but we only recycle about thirty percent of it. It is sad that we are not reusing what goes to recycling. When people put garbage in their recycling bin, all that recycling can't be made into new things like water bottles that are made of plastic, plastic bins, cans, plastic plates, plastic trays, and Legos. We would like to ask city council for one more trash can on the border to border trail by the shortcut up to the gas station. We chose that spot because there were no trash cans near it. So we thought if we put one there, it would be nice for the people on the trail, not the trail. And also, there are a lot of people who walk up the ramp to the gas station. So maybe if we put a trash can there, it would help keep the trash off of the B2B trail.
In conclusion, we hope this will help keep nature from getting hurt in Dexter. Thank you so much for listening.
Great job. That's okay.
Why do we need to make the border to border show more environmentally friendly and prevent plastic from getting to Michigan's waters? One reason that we need to make the border to border show more environmentally friendly is because our trash is not safe. As you might know, turtles sometimes mistake plastic bags for their favorite food, jellyfish, and eat the plastic bag. But it's not just turtles who eat plastic. Fish, birds, and lots of other animals eat plastic, too, and some don't even know they're plastic. Using an example that I could actually have in my life. So let's say a fish eats some microplastics, plastic bags will be dumped into a trash can. Then, a bald eagle comes along, enters the fish, and eats it. One other word for this last one. Now let's say that eagles eat the fish. The eagle feeds the bald eagle to the fish, while unfortunately, now the eagle eats it. Let's see, that's one, two, three, five.
That's horrible, right?
Wait, no. Horrible times nine hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine billion, billion, and eternity of horrors. Oops, sorry. We got carried away. So anyways, in the Huron River, probably the other four rivers surrounding Michigan, too. There is Muskrat, Maquis, Beavers, the Chucks, and some of those animals who like to go into the water. These are trash that goes to the water. Some people have been living around these and throwing trash intentionally because they don't want to rock to the trash anymore. Also, trash cans fall and trash flows out of our pockets and our full order of trash cans. Just what we thought, guilty, correct? Yes, yes, we have it. We admit that we've done some little sins in the past, but that is in the past. We've changed them later, now that our trash bags are surrounding some others. We know that you and no one else remember that can't change this past. You can't affect the future either, but we'll tell you what, you can change the present. Yes, right now, you can change. Don't be a person throwing your trash on the ground after work. Don't put those things against the trash and we're going to throw away. Change that town, those yellow, yellow pieces of trash and plastic. I don't expect one thing to stop our trash. So let's get back to that. So as I assume, you know, Michigan's water is flowing to the ocean. Do you get where we're going? So if we keep intentionally or not intentionally dumping our trash, plastic, and trash dishes, eventually it will lose its weight, change into ocean. Then, in the ocean, there are turtles, and fish, and sharks, and dolphins, and whales, the sea bass, the eel, the octopus, and even more. That's how turtles eat their plastic bags, seagulls eat their plastic bottles, and other creatures, and so on. So now I'm told why you get what you don't want to learn, and you learn that there are next things. Well, let's get to next things. Another reason why we need to make the works for the show more environmentally friendly and plastic from getting to Michigan's waters is because if we don't start cleaning up trash and stop cleaning. Think about it. Your litter and your trash and plastic gets in Michigan's waters and flows into the ocean. Then, if you keep littering, then the ocean is piling and piling and piling up. Who knows if one day trash will flood onto land. By then, there is no one to blame but ourselves. Why, if we change now, even if it's just our small town of Dexter, we can make a difference by cleaning up our trash, warming others' littering, recycling bins like plastic bottles, cardboard boxes, already red and ready to use, and some more, doing trash pickups, putting trash in the right bin, et cetera. Only about thirty percent of things that can actually be recycled are actually recycled. So if we start recycling more, there will be less trash. So if you're wondering right now, how are we going to recycle up the garbage in the trail because there are no recycling bins? Let me tell you. There used to be a recycling place. When the city was just testing the city, how it worked. The recycling people came and thought it was trash and recycling. Then caused them to have to move. We think this might be because the trash bins are too full, so people put their trash in the recycling and we don't want to move. We guess that's a bit better, that at least people somewhat cared about not littering, but it is somewhat completely right. Okay, here is your idea of how to get people to throw trash in the right bin. Make sense to show that there is no recycling, that there's no trash in the trash. Make the recycling a different color than the trash. Maybe make it feel better for kids, so if the recycle store in the mountain thinks of their plants, that's why it comes to kids, carrots, and water, and it's everything that happens. Have a teacher talk about what happened here, you put your trash in the wrong bin and place, and I'll fix it. So please consider doing some of these things to help the recycling bins again. Although we need to make it to the border to border, like the two hundred, because lots of people dump their trash. And because if we don't recycle the ocean, if the border to border channel more environmentally friendly, it provides more than two hundred energy. It's a reason to actually found one that has moved towards beautiful things. And cities and towns will be saved about five million dollars each year, and will provide up to two hundred thousand returns. So we think that's how we think. We reuse stuff, and people who made a job have something to learn. Think about it. You know what? Think about all the disposable masks that are thrown away. That's more trash. Think about the people who put their masks in their pockets and don't zip them. More litter and trash. That's the reason why so many people are losing masks. People could use reusable cloth masks or try to use disposable masks more than once. I think why all those who have lost their job to do, to prioritize them, that would all of the people who lost their jobs are going to have to find a place. Instead of using paper cups all the time or using plastic water bottles, you could use reusable things, using plastic, glass, or metal water bottles. So in conclusion, make it possible for us and this facility to sell. Bye and have a great day.
You all did a wonderful job. Wonderful.
Thank you for that.
Thank you for setting such a good example. Now that's recorded, so this is forever memorialized as a message. You can go to our website and find it. Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome to stay if you want. Most people stay the whole time. Okay, thanks again. Great job. Item E on the agenda? You're welcome. Item E on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I'm moving to the agenda.
Move by Griffin. Thank you. Second vice announced. Thank you. It's a special on the agenda. Seeing none, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Do you have any declarations of candidates? Not at this time. We have no public hearings this evening, so we're down to non-arranged participation. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak this evening? No? Anyone online? Is there anyone online? If you are online and would like to speak, can you use the raise hand feature? I don't think anybody's calling yet. Let's see, any hand. Okay, great. Thank you. So we're gonna have no non-arranged participations evening. We have our meeting list in the packet on page thirty-three. Are there any questions or updates on the meeting list?
I think the work session on the thirteenth, that needs to be changed to six o'clock, or seven.
Catch. Okay, our first report tonight is from Tim Stewart, our Public Services Superintendent-to-be. So Tim, I have a question for you. Where do we need a trash can?
Well, they said. It's a great idea.
Thank you, sir.
No problem. How's the radio in the night?
Good.
Good. I'll get the two week report in front of you. If there's any questions, please go. I'll have a couple of questions next, too.
How's the repair of the fire station, the sewer repair?
I'll take care of that.
All done and no problems?
Well, it was deeper than they thought it was.
Yeah, but I'm working since they finished.
Oh, yeah. I think they're pretty happy about it. I hope so. They came with a little thing. It was great.
Okay, good. Questions on their report?
There are a couple other places I noticed. Stop sign is beyond the sidewalk. I'm sure that's Justin.
Yeah, if you can't let it go.
You're right about the line, Rob.
Yeah, and then I noticed, too, when you're coming, is it Lexington, Dexter, and Arbor Road? There's Chelsea Bank on the right and the gas station on the left. And the out of that, it's beyond the sidewalk. Maybe there's utilities, and then it also looks like, I don't have a picture of this, but it looks like also Detroit before when you're coming onto Dexter and Arbor Road. Just as I was driving.
Yeah.
That one, I think you're right.
And we haven't known when we had elections. I never thought about it until you said it, and I actually, no, I don't think I really noticed that. Project on Second Street, there's another one that's gonna happen.
Yeah, yeah. I'll try to pay attention to that. It's one of those things where, yeah, you don't, you don't see it until you see it.
Right. I didn't, so.
Yeah.
I just want to hear how Second Street's going, but I figured you'd get to that.
Yeah, I was gonna get to that. Last week, we had done some sewer rip cleaning that went really well, especially by your area. So that cleaned up really well, which we're happy with, because I should take care of some problems down in the future. I think, since there was one more thing. Oh, we did check into, and Justin did get it with fertilizer. We talked into it. So it's not four times, it's more than Bella. But his suggestion is basically, we were talking about was, we'll do the initial one about being the regular, but use, use to kill the grass and stuff like that. And then from there on out, obviously, we use the organic stuff. So, and he, he wrote in, I can give the letter to you guys if you want, basically stating that he has not found one organic wise that would be, that's the word, that would take care of all the cat grass and everything. But Second Street, Second Street has been going well. As far as watering and stuff, the Jurassic area I was talking about ended up being a lot better than I thought it was. It went very smooth. We had a shutdown last Thursday and did three tines at once. We're down to the last tie-in, which is going to be at Embarus. And that being said, it's everybody from Dover up to Hudson is now on the water. That's it. Then pretty much there. Okay. I'm excited. We're going to storm, so they got rid of areas of concern except there is with that.
Other questions for Tim?
What does it mean to pick a lot of meat?
So what they do is it's like a big sponge, it's about the same size as the water me itself. What they do is they stick that in, and then they run water, which pressurizes, pushes shit through. And then it picks up any kind of debris or something that might not have caught inside the water. It's pretty common. When I first started, it wasn't. Sometimes it's like you see videos, they do, we never did. And that's all we do. Any water means they could put in the city, Dexter, now, as it will be picked. Correct term.
Oh, good, yeah, I think we're actually, thank you. Next up is our Community Development Manager, Cheryl, how are you?
I'm fine, how is council this evening?
Good.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. So before I go into updates, do you have any questions on what's in my report? I hope you had fascinating reading with the housing, you think economic development. Excuse me. Another way to look at housing. And for Dexter, I think we've always looked at it as a form of economic development. So call us progressive, call us that's the curve. I think it's a good thing. The, our Mill Creek Rule Read project, we'll have a pre-op meeting tomorrow. Excuse me, it's just so that we're all on the same page before they actually submit their application. And if there are any changes that they're proposing, we can, we can address them now instead of, you know, surprise, at the meeting, nobody wants that. We're coming into spongy moth season. Spongy moth season, yes, spongy moth. Does everybody know what a spongy moth is?
It used to be gypsy moth, but they changed the name.
Absolutely, yes, so they're gross little creatures when they, when they hatch and they're crawling to the tree and doing their stuff. And they're not going to kill the tree, but they are gross and disgusting because they drop and they're not, they don't have the best manners, let's just put it that way. So I have put all the information regarding trees and remove tree board, provided the link for archived documents, link to the plan, Parks and Rec, and Trees now has their own standalone webpage. And it's all been updated for everything dealing with trees and all the information. There's a bunch of references and reference material coming out of them, this U extension for how taking a adult spongy moth. We have been in contact with our arborists to find out if we should be spraying BKTAV. It's a very expensive treatment, he suggested, not doing that. There's also a natural occurring virus and fungus that causes them, their colonies to collapse. So there was a big outbreak last, last year in the city. There will probably be another one issue, not quite as big, and it will diminish over the next few years. But there are some things that people can do. It's listed on the website to deal with it. If anybody were to have any questions, they can either contact me, have an extension, or just go to the website. And last thing I want to say is, thank you all again for the support that you provided as I headed the other the office quite a bit last week. So I do appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thanks, Michelle. Next up, I think, is our Sheriff's report. Questions on the written Sheriff's report?
I don't have any comments on that, except to say that residents in our neighborhood are on highlighter because there was a actual invasion and a potential invasion, a direct cross. Friday night.
I think it was Thursday night, maybe Friday.
Thursday night, Friday.
Yeah.
You want to talk about that?
I think that's, that's pretty much the summary.
So on attempt.
No, somebody was inside of a 300 block on Cambridge.
Oh, okay.
And one was told the cops are going to be called, and then went over to the Victoria condos. Maybe smoked a phone, I'm not sure. A screen was cut, and then they saw that person leaving to go down. So I saw an alert from the sheriff's office on. Doesn't seem like that's a high frequency occurrence type thing. If you look at the past, sort of related, I haven't looked past what's in there, because we see the past two years. Full invasion, there have been two today, I guess in twenty twenty-two, not including this one. So I don't know anything about those.
Yeah, there's a special notice out, but this one I did. That leads me to believe the others were likely.
No.
No perpetrators.
Anybody else have any comments on the Sheriff's Report? We'll move down then to, I believe, Justin's report. All right, so you may have your report on page three.
So I was actually going to ask Michelle to report on this, but we did get a call today about our first complaint for someone in the city not mowing their lawn. Yeah, not mowing, not mowing the grass. And they kind of bring the background to topics that we had discussed before, which was no mow May. And I don't think we have any kind of resolution on that. You know, May, the end of May is right around the corner, and probably by the time we get around to, you know, actually enforcing enforcement, it'll be over at, it'll likely be mowed anyway. I don't know if council had any thoughts on the concept of no mow May for the future as we look forward to next year and the possible return of the concept.
Is that, is that why this person didn't mow their lawn?
I have no idea. Since council has not done a resolution, excuse me. It's just a little bit of time element for us. One of the things that I did ask for to do is thinking that we are now passing it then. It's very clear, we just cut grass and as of now. Tomorrow is, she is going to drive around the city and take pictures and look at the addresses and send out notices that any new grass in accordance with the ordinance. What will be with? Excuse me, every Sunday, we should have a specific day, a Tuesday, that she will go and see who's doing your grass, who's not. Send out, you know, the providers. Get them to put the grass.
What's the height again, nerd?
Eight inches.
There are.
Yeah, weeds that are on, getting more and more. We're not like the ones, so you don't have to take the dirt, but we kind of.
You can eyeball the edges.
I'm sorry.
You can eyeball the edges.
Yes, yes. It is very important, it's very clear today. Who's mowed and who hasn't. And so I don't know.
That's for the future. So we experimented a bit in our own yard with the whole natural overseeding thing. So our lawn was getting long. But last week, I was at the work session, we were talking about it, and I recently looked at the ordinance, and I was like, I think we're getting close to eight inches. So, and it was getting long anyways. So we remowed this weekend. I don't know that our yard was the one somebody's complaining about, but that's fine if they were. But I will say that I, I've talked to other people about the concept, and I wouldn't be surprised if there was confusion because I think child township may have adopted something for no mow May, and I don't know if any of the other surrounding townships did, but you can never be sure that when people hear something, they know it applies to their own municipality or the same municipalities. And in terms of moving forward, I wouldn't personally have a problem with people waiting till the end of May. I mean, we dated, I guess, almost till mid-May, and it was starting to look pretty raggedy. And I was picking the dandelions, which maybe that's the point of no mow May, to leave the dandelions for the pollinators. I just picked the dandelions. And I just wanted to get the grass overseed. So next year, I wouldn't have a problem if we adopted it to dry it out. Those are my personal thoughts on it.
It's very interesting that it goes a whole month. How much work it takes to have to be well tanned grass. Yeah. And some of our lawns are, and we have very large laws, and that's a lot to mow. And if it's something the council wants to do in the future, I personally am not proud of it. And I'm sure that people want to do it well. So, but it's a lot of work to deal with that grass.
Zach?
I'm gonna start by saying we love the little pollinators. We leave the dandelions, we have planted flowers so that they're blooming from snow to the end of the year. We left Burberry bushes way too long. Fruit trees in our yard. My concern is no mow May was started in Minnesota, which is colder than us. They don't have eight inch grass at the end of May in Minnesota. And I would prefer to do it administratively with the light touch. I think this putting down, yes, no one mow your lawn has challenges. Folks are likely to put a bunch more grass out onto the sidewalks, onto the streets, into the catch basins if they wait till it's eight inches or ten inches, or twelve inches to mow it, which causes a lot of concerns if you're on a motorcycle, that'll kill you probably, or maybe not, but it'll take you down and we'll fill up catch basin. So I prefer to allow folks to continue to do it with the light touch of thoughtful administration of enforcement.
I think that's an excellent proposal, Zach.
Thank you.
What's that?
I think Jim would have a heart attack if totally couldn't mow as long.
Well, doesn't mean you can't, it just means you don't have to.
I think you guys are handling it right. Light touches, good approach from my perspective.
Tim already, already talked about a couple of applications in parks. With your back, our contractor, he suggested that if we didn't want to go with the full war of completely eliminating crabgrass and other weed control in our parks, that maybe do the first one as crabgrass and weed control, and then just do organic fertilizer for the other treatments. Because Kurt sent me some pictures today, and they so far have not done any, any treatment for weeds. And they're already starting to kind of take over in mind of the park and some of our other parks. So I think it's only that at the time for the grass goes away and crabgrass and other weeds and take over. So.
That's the need to maintain some against the weeds. Close down before May, right? The crabgrass prevention is usually in March or April. It's very early, I guess.
We've already done two steps. Of the four steps.
Excellent.
I'm just saying, yes, it's early.
Plus for picking the end of the last. I do it too. I'm sorry, Zach, go ahead.
I think this, this approach with the one application and other approach later on is probably a good start. I would, for future years, be curious how long we've been doing this. I think in my background, I worked City Mount Pleasant Park for four years. The cemetery, so initially I was mowing lawn. And I also got to use the big ten foot mowers with the drop down and the side wings and the cushions you could drive over a cow, and it would just float. We didn't use any fertilizer, any weed control, any of that stuff in Mount Pleasant, and folks were okay with it. So maybe it's just an expectation thing, you know, when the city grew, we had a bunch of people moving from Canton Plymouth. Those parts that we're used to absolutely manicured, and that was the expectation. So maybe for our next survey round in a couple of years, when we recover and finish reading it, we start approaching that subject of is it important for us to not see some broadleafs or crabgrass, and are we okay with that? Because it's grass and it's not a monoculture. Really, if you get a chance to drive a ten foot mower, I highly recommend it.
Except, don't drive over cows.
But we did have, we did have a fellow one year who, we had one park that was on the far side of town. Mission Street is five lane road, so very busy. He went over to mow the park on the ten foot mower, crossed Mission Street, decided he needed to stop at Taco Bell. So he was parked in Taco Bell with the mower in the spot there. It happened once.
Okay, if anyone wants to follow that. That's funny.
Just a more quick thing. One is we got a request from the sheriff's office to post an antenna at eighty-one forty to fix it to the outside of the building to apparently automatically update their handheld TVs. Yeah. The, the radios. I don't believe it's covered as part of our contract with them. Apparently, the other communities that they're in have just allowed it without an update contract or anything written. I wanted to get counsel's thoughts on if we needed to go through the full process of updating the sheriff's office contract to permit them to post.
So can we just do with the resolution? Make it known without having a contract. That might say a negative to. That's. It's got the pass.
So, yeah, it has the pass, but at least you can see what it is from here as opposed to right now. You need to have different visual missions of what this.
Why don't I just go to the procedure then? I mean, I don't think this is a bad picture of it, go through the.
Yeah, it's on there one time. Fire court side, took down. They took down.
I just have lots of passes like everybody else, it should be. Straightforward, the Mac is still. Let's know. Let somebody know.
Okay. We are, we have, we talked to parks, we talked to PDA, and we're going to move forward with placing temporary chalk stencils down the sidewalks downtown. You have a picture of it in your packet, the walker bikes. It is just an educational campaign for people not walking, not riding their bikes on the sidewalk downtown. And we'll see kind of what feedback we get. Yeah. Yeah, like in case for a base, oh, that's, that's gone, we need it. If everybody says, oh, yeah, we love that one, make it permanent. The last thing I have for you is, we received a request from Eagle, and I've included some different previous packets at a broader level. But they're looking to get a right-of-way permit to place soil gas samples or soil gas samplers in the right-of-way to measure for TCD, which is the kind of what we're concerned about with this building, but so far all of our tests have come back. Which um, what is the chemical that we're concerned about with with this building, but so far all of our tests have come back not hazardous in this building. And um, the initial request was related to the former Clark Station. They had a leak um, in one of their their gas drums back in the nineties. And um, then they went back and did a bunch of research and called up and asked for a meeting with us and said, okay, yeah, you know, we're, we went back and looked at other test samples and see that that there was some TCE that was found. And now we want to expand the scope of what what we're looking at. So um, we're looking to have an internal meeting with uh, ASTI, our environmental group that that we work with. Scott Manziel and staff uh, to kind of talk through what potential implications are. As uh, Eagle is potentially looking at the cause of the TCE being thirty five fifteen. Thirty forty five from street. So it's uh, it's gonna be a process.
So how many wells are there? That's all these trees that's right?
Yeah, it's all about the keel color. Small points. And this is, it's a problem.
So it's currently shaded, it's what they already know?
Is, is. They 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 can't tell you specifically, oh, it's, you know, a certain level of concentration right here.
And what are they basing that off of? They have some prior samples that we're looking at.
They 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 do have a couple of prior samples.
And these passive soil gas sample are different than the monitoring laws?
Correct. The monitoring laws were for groundwater.
No, the question I have is, are they in the right of way in all the spots and I know it's intended, but is that? Or is that we just using the right ways?
So, so.
Some of them look like they're in the park.
Yeah, they're 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 looking to place them in the right of way if if the points, we we haven't gotten to the point with them where we've said these points are in the right way and these points are not in the right of way. We wanted to, we we haven't even gotten to that point yet.
The ones that are near Jeffords and Maine. Within the park. And where the alley comes out. Those might be within that protected zone that nobody's supposed to disturb.
Right.
For our, for our agreement, what's that much?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah. So.
I don't think they would change an agreement ever, do you? Or permit?
Well, remember we had, we had all, we had all the arsenic rich soils that were excavated from behind the dam. Were brought up and placed along that mound to build that up, if I remember right.
Yeah.
So it's, all of that exists.
That starts in the park.
It comes up.
The area of restricted just comes up into that area that we're talking about. It's not clearly delineated on this.
It might be, it might be worth having somebody overlay that where they want to put the wells, just so we know where what they're doing. What's that?
How deep are the wells?
You know, that's a great question, Paul. I didn't get to that question. How deep are the wells?
So the um, the, so soil gas samples, I believe they said were about a foot in. So basically they they go and they 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 drill the hole. You know, whether it's in soil or in concrete or asphalt, they just they drop a little thing into it and then seal and then seal the top of it.
So it's on a foot deep?
Yeah.
So the surface really is. So what's the next step in this? Is the meeting set?
Yeah, it's the meeting. We 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 don't have a date set for it yet. We're we're trying to coordinate with the STI and see what, what dates work for that.
Doesn't look like a thing, Justin. So I'll move down to my report. Um, anybody has any questions on the report, I'm happy to take them. Uh, but um, probably the biggest topic is related to our fire chief search. Doug Armstrong told us on May thirteenth that wanted to draw that patient for consideration. And um, that there was a lot of uncertainty in his mind about the position, but a lot with also things going on with his family. To him and without getting too specific, so um, what, and I was right here when he told me, he was sitting there. John Westman from Worcester Township was here at the same time. John and I were both surprised because we've been, you know, been talking to Doug the last few months about a contract and we're very close to having. Welcome, Aaron and Alex. When um, when we talked to Doug, you know, he said, if the fire board continues to accept Chief Smith's July retirement date. The duties of fire chief would likely fall to the assistant chiefs of which Doug was one. And um, he said, yeah, I understand. So anyway, we asked him and said, you know, if you do that, are you prepared to help? Do that even though you just declined the formal position? Well, after talking to Doug a little bit after his decision and leading up to the fire board meeting. Doug and the other assistant chief, Steve Gadsden are both um, interested in in putting together a plan to take over responsibility for Chief Smith when he retires. With the fire board, um, accepted last Thursday and I didn't have it in here because we hadn't taken any action on it or whatever. Following it, especially at the board meeting, um, Doug Armstrong and so the other, this is a key that you're gonna put together of the post plan. And how they would share the duties. Thoughts, the thought is there that it would give Doug a chance to see what the job entails. Maybe get familiar with it as we work through a process. So that's, that's likely the next steps. In terms of that search, if the plan that they put together in the initial time on the job, well, doesn't look, Doug is is more interested than than is withdrawal than the further we'll have to start this process. And so, but everybody was confident that they could do it for a while, but um, so that's, that's the direction we're heading. The formal approval of that plan will be at the next meeting, so we're giving them a month to work through. I did have Sheriff Clayton contact me and met him here last Tuesday. I gave him a tour of our, our office and uh, he just really wanted to stop and say hi. He was on his way out to meet the supervisor, Raffi, which Dexter Towne as well. I think he just wanted to touch base before the contract talks and you know, he's a, he's a good guy. He's looking out for all of us. He expects the outside, the outside patrol to continue wide enough to get service issues. He he doesn't think that the contract will be, I mentioned this at budget concession, only a five percent increase over what he was like the last one was. But he doesn't expect it to be much greater than than that, or, so. Really nice guy. Does anyone have any questions from the other end?
So, as I read here with the student reps. They're here through.
These student reps are here through June and the new ones will start in July, the first of June, July.
And these guys are out there facing space right now to save the world, right?
Quite sure I could say that, but.
They're through finals.
We're through finals. We just had it came from a, a meeting for our ID program. We had our last exam on day four, yeah. So, you're very, very thankful to go.
Since you guys weren't here, we had the student reps from the fourth graders from Wiley, Levis.
I know, I was really hoping I was gonna be able to make that, but you ran a little bit over. I was really looking over that. All the colors in the email, they're so, it's just heavily excited. I was like, I wanna hear about this. So I'll have to look back and record it.
We told them it was gonna be online, so we'll fast track that. Okay, without any further questions, I'll move down to the consent agenda. Oh, before I get to consent agenda, I do have on consent agenda, an appointment of recommendation of Jeanette Frost. Parks and Recreation Commission, so I make sure everybody saw that. You have any questions? Jeanette Frost. Lives over on Lake Street in Sun Farms. So, okay, and Donna usually does a consent agenda, so somebody's gonna have to read the three items if there's a person that would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda or to, yeah, motion to approve, I appreciate it.
I'll make that, keep the work down, right, and that's uh, paid sixty five there. It's for three, three items.
Yep, the three items.
So it'll be a regular paycheck at just forty thousand, two eighty nine, oh two. Uh, employer cost for FICA and MERS and those for eight thousand, eight ninety five sixteen. And then MERS employer, employer cost is fifteen thousand dollars. Total of two thousand ninety.
Yep, two hundred and ninety thousand five twenty six.
Five twenty six oh five.
Okay, that's first one, yeah. And then we have two other items on the consent agenda also, Paul.
Yeah, we'll do that, those two too, very can't find.
Yeah, so we shared the agenda there. Thank you.
Okay, and the proposal for Boshwick for catch basin repairs in the mountain, not to exceed the six thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And where did Jeanette Frost to the front of the exhibition?
Thank you, guys. Second by Griffin. Thank you both. And we could also vote to approve the consent agenda.
Yes.
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 Yes, most precarious. Thank you. We have no unfinished business tonight, so we're down to new business under item M. First one, M one is consideration of a special land use for vacation rental housing at eighty forty here on.
I'm moved through this request for vacation rental housing located at eighty forty here on street, subject to the conditions. It's not page eighty two of the packet, it's within the stack review dated May eighteenth, April twenty sixth. And that the applicants must obtain his zoning compliance permit in accordance with section eight dot one one dot B, that's two nine and zoning ordinance.
I agree for the second there, Rob. Okay, thank you both.
Okay, so this is our first vacation rental and if all of our applicants are thorough and as forthcoming with information as these applicants are, it will be a pleasure to have additional vacation rentals in Dexter. The planning commission um, was just uh, what's the word I want to use, the volume, I think it was the other night, they were just super impressed. So um, they are also here tonight. Um, everything that they presented to the planning commission is in your packet. I hope we paid special attention to the PowerPoint that they put together because I think one of the things that was so amazing on this was what they thought people would rent their, their, at, you know, what would, what would be the impetus people would use their vacation rental? Their anticipated activity was Udon football traffic, holidays and vacations, Udon business. What actually, um, the actual activity they had was out of state families visiting local families. Uh, especially new grandparents. Families with procedures at Udon Hospital. Our local attractions, not just the city, but in the general area and then local specialty businesses. Um, so it's, that's a really interesting economic development sort of nerdy thing. I thought that was very, very, very interesting. Playing commission got a lot out of it as well. It has support from the uh, the residents. Uh, it's a very cohesive neighborhood. It's small, but they're very cohesive. And um, I can answer any questions that you might have about that.
I was at that planning commission and they did a great job of presentation and they had full support of the neighbors. Eighty forty here on, just um, a couple houses west of the cider mill.
Yeah, little yellow house with a red door.
Zach?
Um, just a process, a little nerdy process question. Are the house rules made a part of the record in the special land use approval, the no smoking?
Yes, it's all part of my report, which is in the.
Okay.
Yeah.
Make that as clear.
That's all these six boards you were.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, I think one fifteen in the packet, you received an email from someone asking, there was a limit on the number of vacation rentals on any given street or throughout the city for that matter. And you had indicated like not, there are probably some legal issues there. And we're calling, but I haven't searched in the past ten seconds. Something with the city of Van Arbor and I don't know if they were trying to place a cap on a percentage of homes that could be used for short term rental. I don't know if that rings a bell, but I think that's an interesting question. Uh, and so I'd be curious if you want to speak more on that point.
So um, from a implementation process, um, first come, first served zoning doesn't work. There's no real, it's hard to do and I don't think there's a solid foundation legally to be able to do it. But I think that was some of the difficulty in Arbor has run into, uh, when they were going through this process. I I know of communities on the west side of Michigan that tried to do the same thing, which it it just doesn't work. I understand for communities like that, where you have a really high, you know, summer destination sort of draw, we're unique. We have very interesting things. It's a great place to live. You don't quite have the destination draw that would pollinate a bunch of different vacation rentals at this point. It'll be interesting to see if that happens. At this point, I don't see it. I don't see it happening. And I'm not sure
So, yeah, okay, so it looks like in March of twenty twenty one, I see an M life article that says that they ban non-owner occupied short term rental properties.
Right, so that that was more of the vacation rentals. We do vacation rentals as a very specific special use. You have to have a local agent. In this case, they're the local agent and they live right next to it. They don't rent their property out when they're at home. So if they are on vacation, they're never renting it out. From a standpoint of the intent and purpose of our vacation rental ordinance, they they are the most skinny.
Yeah, I had no concerns about this request. I was just sort of a more general question. Um, are you, is somebody gonna end up on a street where, you know, nobody's permanent, or something?
I, is it, is that the handle there? Absolutely. But it's. I, I, I don't see it in reality should we have.
There are, there are also sorts of different ways that communities will slice it up based on the conditions and experience. Traverse City had some spacing requirements or like maximum number per block because they had that concern. Although we don't have that card baked in because it's a special land use, we can look and say, not, this is gonna be half the street is gonna be all rental houses. That's not consistent with the intent of, of the district. So we may not have something hardware, but we do have an opportunity to look at that on a case by case basis.
Other questions by council? Ms. Pam, please call the vote to approve the special land use for vacation rental housing at eighty forty here on.
Cousins.
Yes.
Arora.
Yes.
Retch.
Yes.
Cover.
Yes.
Shell.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes. Thank you very much for being great, Bob. Good luck. New business item M two is discussion of community survey.
So. Josh Lee or Josh. Josh did a lot of the groundwork on compiling the results and they do get a little support. As to what that we need from all, all the survey.
Alright, so yeah, so I mean, if you look into like the. The other, I kind of went down. How the different kinds of sections that we decided that are good surveys for back and then there. When kind of the target audience and collection that's just mentioning, you know, that we really target, target the Dexter community versus just the city of Dexter. So people who are not only living in the state or state colleges outside of zip code and within zip code as well. Kind of went through this summer collection, but. Facebook post putting information out there, using the each Dexter email update as well. The front page of the newsletter, ad, your links on it as well. The big results, the trouble, we got seven hundred thirty response. So that was a thirteen point seven percent sample rate in city residents. Not city residents, that's a really incredibly good sample size, not just typically about five, five percent.
Is that based on the total population or registered voters, like adults?
So it is based on, I took the latest, what, what they do are graphic sharing to the twenty-five hundred and twenty-two census and that's.
Okay, so it's total. Similarly, there's many of like seven year olds.
Yeah.
In that category. So the response rate would be effectively higher.
You're saying they ran out of screen time in order to respond.
Yeah, in terms of the report, you know, I did some like comparisons. I tried to pull data from that twenty-two, or the twenty-eleven surveys to see kind of how the demographics kind of lined up between those couple surveys, a couple of pages you'll see. And so the bench parts can test the population a lot more. We virtually, I know there are in the surveys as well, but we did get this to keep a pretty good set aside and, you know, those little middle aged groups there. Just kind of go through, how's education, what's that, split the plan. A, a couple of things that I know we did make some changes, so like, like, well, place the plan, there were a lot, would work from all specifically, a lot of people have mentioned, now people working. Working in Colorado, San Francisco, and all over. And then I kind of went into some of the open ended questions, um, so I can summarize the benchmarking section, uh, these what they're said and not. I kind of went through, especially for like the priorities, so I went through a lot of my, a lot of the work I went to taking Excel, looking for keywords and kind of breaking down what we're really seeing. So for the analysis initially, what I did is that went through the key words that were definitely copied from those, you know, like fire station, specific street names, water parks, things along that. So that's how a lot of the incentives and kind of.
Also, like, like Josh, Josh was saying, we get a lot of, a lot of the questions were text based responses. Which takes quite a bit of effort to, to compile and analyze. So rather than going response by response and that, trying to basically summarize each response. We're going through, looking for keywords, key topics.
And then just to just, like, some, well, it's like, such like, you're looking at the keywords to try and analyze the sample population. The big issue was, like, if I tried to search the word tree. If you try to practice a really specific on trees, the problem is the word tree is also on the word street. And so you pick up things about streets. But then, you know, if you're looking for, oh, I want to see people talking about roads and streets. Well, a lot of people were using the terminology street, referring to just more of a naming convention versus street naming. So, yeah, it made it a little difficult since those open that questions, but.
Were the paper survey responses incorporated into this? Were they like hand entered into survey like?
Yeah, so whenever I brought them back to the office, usually the day unless they brought it, they, they. I brought them in, they're sitting on my desk, gonna check them off right in the data. But to, to the best of my knowledge, or something, they were writing specific places that you wouldn't actually access digitally, but as, you know, close to.
So the, the. Real kind of summary begins on page one thirty-seven. And rather than kind of reading through item by item, does anybody have any questions or at least they want to? Start a conversation?
Yeah, I, I worked on sort of a bunch of general thoughts, I think, for the most part, and then some specific things at the end. So how I'm looking at this is I'm imagining, I think I said this at the workshop on Wednesday, that seven hundred thirty people came to a meeting and spoke during pre-range participation. That's how I'm viewing their input. And the number, I, I mean, I was super impressed. The number of people who took the time to fill in the open ended responses. I know it creates a lot of work on the backend, but I feel like that's a gold mine of data. Especially by the end of the survey, I think it was close to three hundred people provided an open ended response to even the last question. So after completing this long survey, they still took time to add additional thoughts at the end. I think that's really great. There's a lot more I have to do, you know, to look through it. My hope for, you know, is now that we have these data in hand is that would be really great and I'll make a personal effort to do this, but to the extent that staff can to. To make sure that any relevant survey comments to a particular agenda topic are incorporated into a packet. So if we're talking specifically about the charter amendment or something like that, that we're able to, you know, in that metal, you either take a screenshot, copy and paste or something so we can say, and here's what they said. On the survey, just to remind us of that. Again, I don't think it means that that dictates our action, but that we imagine that those number of people came to that for sure and reading until it's what they thought. I thought it was striking that if it was two thirds of respondents learned about city news from the email updates and also the Sun Times news. That's perhaps not surprising because both of those were ways that we advertised the survey. So to the extent that that's how somebody accessed the survey, you would expect them to find out about it that way. Uh, but I also, so question. They were summarized in the packet. I was like, oh, what if anything prevents you from attending a city council meeting? So there's a consensus among respondents. If people are unaware of what is on the agenda and whether how residents can access the meetings virtually, and I saw that comment come up in a number of spots. And a resident also wrote, if they're not shared in the email, I don't go looking for them. So I thought perhaps we could consider adding links to the upcoming agenda and link in the packet to the weekly email update. Prior to at least city council and planning commission meetings. Um, I think, I don't know if we usually send updates out Fridays, but I think usually that information is available and just copy and paste wherever you send it in our. In the emails to us, if that you go in the email updates. Uh, somebody suggested if there could be a Google calendar maintained by the city that residents could subscribe to, that has the events and the public meetings on, and then they could subscribe to that. I don't know what that would entail. Maybe it's enough that you have the event calendar up right here on the website. Again, in terms of just what we do with this quantity of information, if we can share, like, I think parks, uh, they're gonna be reviewing the comments relevant to parks. I'm sure arts and arts, culture and heritage will be. Thing, if anything is relevant to the chamber, I think a lot of people said, oh, um, we should be having more local events in town. I don't know who really is in charge of that. I don't know that it's council per se, but. Anybody who think we can share certain results with, I think the more we can do that, the better. So the. The sheriff was just in. We have a number of questions there. I think it would be great to, I think it's Q, question thirty-one to thirty-five, just to allow them to give them the printout or the electronics copy of that PDF and say, here's the feedback we got about how comfortable people feel in the city. I think there were questions that we could share that with our waste management representative about trash pickup and hauling. And the more specific, or, yeah, I guess more specific next steps, the charter amendment that proposal definitely stuck out at me based on responses to question seventeen. More for my own personal interest. I don't know how Survey Monkey captures period data, but. I'd be curious to know more things, more like IP addresses, how long it took people to check the survey. Stuff like just more about the survey taking takes.
Survey Monkey has, I was pulling up the survey monkey assessments, I think, the average times sixteen, something like that. So it wasn't bad. Wasn't too bad, you know, especially I think the three, pre-survey numbers, like eighteen was what it was predicting, but.
And I don't know. I mean, I don't know that we would need to do it for the open end necessarily, because we put a lot of time into this, but considering separating out the city, who we believe to be the city, the actual city residents from the rest and just. If any pattern emerges, we can use a different response pattern. Like the, the few people who are not in the city, are they biased on the data in any way? And then one more thing, a personal effort that I had started a while back and haven't gotten around to, just because the data were not organized conveniently. I would love to see a snapshot of registered voters as a, like every November election, you know, going back, you know, twenty twelve, twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen. To figure out how much is the, how much turnover is there in the population? How many people are the same in terms of registered voters? And so I got with Justin a while back and I got the registered voter databases, but it wasn't really easy to, I think there was a separate file where I had to track out the people who had died and like for us, moved out and. So there's a lot of data thingy that had to be done, but that's just another personal interest of mine that I think. I'll try to do on my own, but if staff has time and interest. Cause I, yeah, at least, I mean, people I tend to know, I've only been here for five years now. I know a lot of people are, you know, who moved. But I, I know that a lot of people don't. And I'm just kind of curious to get a handle on how, you know, we have that, like, how many people have lived here. You could see it looks like. Yeah, how, how things have moved since twenty eleven to begin. Also, random thoughts, but.
Yeah, and just. And then also I have a document in works right now. It's kind of like the top of the questions, questions, comments and perceptions. How's that a vibe out things along those lines? Either put out a ticket on Facebook or put them out, you know, a day.
And then my thought kind of in that thing was, you know, maybe at the end of each email update doing a, did you know? To help address some of the misconceptions that were included, like the city needs to fix the road out of the viaduct. Watch that kind of road mission, we're not responsible for that, or we don't have authority over that section of road, that, you know, that kind of stuff.
Could be nice if you also added though, but we have shared those thoughts with the responsible party. Or, you know, opposite, we, ways we've incorporated it, we've got. Anytime we're able to do that and we feel like we're able to specifically point to something in the survey, I think it would be really helpful to share that back to the public, say, you know, we, there was overwhelming response. And, you know, we took that seriously and here's how we meant to this, or, you know, started making sense with that.
So I have a question. Maybe many questions, but. Take question twenty-six. I'm trying to pick one that's. I think in terms of topic. Question twenty-six is, it's on page one thirty-eight. At least. Does the city have a sufficient number of bicycle racks? So this summary says of the five hundred and one respondents, to answer this question. Twenty-six point one saw that the city needed to increase the number of bicycle racks around town. Of the location, then, then there's further information there. So the, the first comment I made, so of the five hundred and one respondents, that's not necessarily residents, but respondents. Twenty-six point one percent saw the city needed to increase. That's like a hundred, let's say it's a quarter, a hundred twenty-five to a hundred and thirty. People said they needed to increase the number. Um, so some people didn't even answer that question then, right? Cause we had seven hundred and thirty. So out of the, out of the number of people that actually looked at the survey. That number would be a much less percent, but if you further then take the data that's there, it says of the locations mentioned. The following were the three that were mentioned the most frequently. So downtown Main Street says twenty-nine percent of no respondents. So let, let's just round that to thirty for easy math. Thirty percent of a hundred and thirty is thirty-nine. So there's thirty-nine people. Out of five hundred and one. That felt like we don't have enough bike racks in town. So thirty-nine out of five hundred and one. Is like eight percent. That feel like we don't have enough bike racks in downtown. Are we also doing the math to say that means that ninety-two percent of the people think we have enough bike tracks?
Was Q twenty, was this a, I'm just trying to figure out.
Cause it was a yes or no question, right, to start?
Right, so where did the, where did the data for one, two and three come from?
From, from, from the.
Was the no, like in other specify and then they filled it like there?
Yeah. So you see, just like, so it's like no, and then it would open up a.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that if, if, if I was, if I, when I, the way my mind reads at that question. Obviously, we were trying to identify if we did that by tracks. And this certainly, you could, you could, you could interpret that we, from this little bit on the surface that we should put some more in downtown Main Street. That to me is intuitive to me, but ninety, ninety-two percent of the people that answered this question. Think we have a sufficient number. That's an extremely high percentage. So. And again, I took that and reversed it, right? You, if, you could write, written this the other way, that in a simple statement could have been ninety-two percent of the people think that we have enough bike tracks in downtown. So I, I'm only putting that example out there. I'm not anti-bike tracks. I'm okay if we add more, or maybe most people think we have enough. But we have to be careful with how we're gonna. Use the data. Is all I guess I'm, I mean, there's a lot of interpretation with this and. I don't even, and, and, you know, in this question, I went back to the beginning, the fourth word is respondents. It's not even residents. So there's another sub subset of this question. It might present a different field, but I don't know what it is yet. I don't. So I don't, I don't want to overanalyze it. I don't want to underanalyze. I'd say there's different perspectives, but it, okay, Zach?
Yeah, so I'm gonna step back and the surveys are a tool to understand. It's not, the survey says this, we're gonna do this.
Right.
So I, when I'm doing master plans for communities, I also often get freaked out, like, people don't understand, like, well. It's a tool, you have to interpret it. To apply that strictly or that deep to say that ninety-two percent of the people who responded believe that we have adequate parking in downtown. If, if I were to take action on that, I would wanted to have some pre-questions on that, like, how often do you ride your bicycle in town? Where do you ride your bicycle downtown? If there were more bicycle parking, would you ride more often? Because folks who never ride their bike, they're not looking for it. They don't know.
Well, that, that's where I'm going. I, I think some of these questions might lead to a deeper dive if we're actually trying to implement off of it, is what I'm getting at. That, I, I, I think your comment as well, so I'll let you finish, but I think it's really, really good.
No, so that, that's part of the thing too, is that I would say is if. No, so that, that's part of the thing too, is that I would say is if, if some, you know, for example, the way that I could use this information right now is if someone came and said, here's five thousand dollar grant to put in bicycle racks. We, we now have some direction where folks think where it goes or where it would be most effective. I'd also say that the high school really needs a bicycle rack that's covered so the kids can actually ride it out there and not just leave it thrown on the grass next to the trees out front. As our exchange kid did, because she couldn't find anywhere to actually put your, put your weight. That's all. But it's, it's so, it's just a tool for us to decide, for us to use in our decision-making process.
I just, I just think that the, the numbers are interesting because when, when, like the, the following question is twenty seven, it says, does the city have a sufficient number of parking spaces? Okay, now there's a less benign topic to, to some, okay. But you know, he, here, here, here we have, when asked if there was a sufficient number of parking, let's see, thirty one percent of the respondents, no number provided, found that there was not. So thirty, thirty one out of a hundred, right? And then, then it said, of those respondents, most found that the parking efficiencies were located in the downtown area based on the following thresholds. Thirty one percent of the thirty one percent picked downtown as the biggest problem. Well, thirty one percent of thirty one percent is nine. So nine out of a hundred people think that there are not enough, are not a sufficient number of parking spaces. Well, nine out of a hundred thinks that there's not. Ninety one out of a hundred think there's okay in downtown. Again, you, I mean, you can turn these numbers into whatever you want is what I'm, this is the whole point I'm making, okay? And, and, and I think there are, there's, there, I think we have to be careful that these are an indicator, not an absolute, is all, is all I'm pointing out with those two.
And it's imperative such a perceptive law, based on our perception. And I'm always some of the newer people on council will never heard this story of a student who's a graduate. His grandmother brought him in a few years ago. And he wanted to talk about parking with the downtown. He was interested in whether there was a lot. So this was his little project. And so I asked him, well, why do you use that?
What?
And I just thought that that was, that's always a very interesting thing.
Well, you know, where I, where I wanted to, I want to take this one one step further. You know, when you look at the one, two and three there, we're downtown, thirty one percent of no respondents. Number two is in the area behind the businesses in downtown. Some people might still call that down. The third one is Main Street. Most people could probably call that downtown. And it says other areas in the downtown area that were mentioned include Broad, Jeffords, Alpine, Mill Creek was also mentioned. I mean, if you total it all up, almost every one of those places is, is really downtown. You know, so, so if you don't subdivide that, thirty one or a third of the people think there's insufficient parking. That's a much more significant number than nine. You know what I mean? For the, the, you know, I mean, it's time to do the math, I guess. How we define some of the stuff too. So I think we just need to pay attention to it as well. It's an interesting subdivider, on, on a few words.
Is there a way to run the report? So at least these automated charts are based on the total number of respondents and not just the valid responses. So when you have a skip, so when you have a skip pattern, it makes sense that you overreduced denominator. When you don't have a skip pattern, you would expect everybody to have answered that question. And so, you know, to Sean's point, is your denominator is changing every question. So then you can't turn from percentage consistently. The survey monkey let you determine, or so, you know, indicate that the denominator you want for all questions, at least those that go with a skip pattern, is the total number who at least started the survey. I mean, another interesting thing to do is to look at patterns of responses across the survey. And if you look at the raw data here itself, while or however it comes, you can see, I mean, and it wasn't exactly clear to me that this happened, but some people can answer the first few questions, then they answer nothing else. So effectively you can cut them out. You know, they're not an actual respondent because they just dropped off. So you can, you can see that sometimes in the data file, because you see a whole bunch of blanks on the right-hand side. But even if you want to leave everybody in, I would hope that there's a way, because I agree, you, I mean, when I've done server report writing, my N for any question is the total, it's always the same. Unless you have a skip pattern and only, and a question was only relevant to the people who like were filtered into that.
So a lot of the questions is that, that, that it kind of is the issue where I agree that people respond to me. It does create that issue where it's, I, I mean, if it was able to keep it like seven, thirty across the board.
So like, and, and I don't know that Survey Monkey provides that option, but I mean, we, we could, we could hand do that math.
Yeah.
We can, we can pull those responses out, put it pop, pop it into Excel, add in the no responses.
Or at least report them side by side and you would just say, you know, valid N and total N. Or, you know, so your valid N is your, the people who answer the questions in total N is the number of respondents. And then you have valid percentage and total percentage. Yeah, I mean, to, and to your question too about bicycle racks, it, it, I mean, it does matter how you ask the question. So if the question was, I mean, I agree with that point. You could also have a question, does the city have a bicycle racks? You know, on Main Street or downtown, and you would, you would get different response patterns because what you're prompting people to be thinking about is different.
Right.
So yeah, I think there's a lot to take in the context when you're incorporating your responses and.
Well, like you said, there's a ton of data here.
Right.
Just have to think mature, thinking about it with, before using it to guide something.
Yeah.
And, and decide whether we have all the information on picture or whether we need to get more. A little time here.
And again, for me personally, how I would be thinking about it is how I thought about responses to any survey I've done particularly as it relates to the city where if somebody is telling me something that I haven't considered before and I want to consider it, you know, and oh, that's a different perspective. I hadn't thought of that. Or maybe there's info that I get and that, not that I don't think it's valid, but I maybe have other pieces of information or, or a different perspective. And so maybe I set that in for aside. That's again, how I would see that too. Same thing if somebody comes to a meeting. Just because somebody says that doesn't mean you have to do it, but I, I do want definitely to take it into consideration. So when we can be reminded of what people have said on particular topics, I would appreciate that. I will do my best to do that on my own. Then I hope it's a council that we can all do that.
Anybody else have comments, questions on it? Yeah, please.
I think when Justin sent us the raw data, the survey was not closed yet. Is that correct? Please, can you send us another full raw data?
Okay, any other questions on the service? Actually putting all that together, Josh, then your work on it. My comments were not analysis. I just want to make sure. It's great. Oh, it's good. Good job. She did a really good job.
Do we have any plans to send like a thank you to the community or like here, where you can go to see the results? Is there anything that we?
So we, we, we did send, send out a thank you with the last email, I think.
Okay.
I, I don't know. We had plans to say, see the data here, but we did say, you know, they, they take the, the council is going to be looking at it and up company today. Did council want to spend any time discussing questions? Question about the charter amendment. Yes.
Page one fifty eight.
At the, at the budget work session, they talked about what, what, what do we want to, or what, what are some possibilities for this, this topic? And I know that you put something on the ballot for November, the deadline is in August. Which isn't too far away.
I would be fine moving forward with some ballot proposal related to exempting personal property. From that section. Which would leave real property of any value requiring public sales. Which I think East Lansing might have that.
The minimum dollar value applies to all real and personal? Is that what you're saying? Is that how I spent that question?
That's, yeah. I mean, you could write it both ways. You could say exempt personal property and exempting real property valued at less than five thousand dollars, twenty thousand dollars. I don't know. I guess I would like to think of a, I'd maybe be okay with doing that. I'd like to think of a specific real life example of when that's happened. I think some people said, well, what if we own like a slipper of land or a corner of something and we need to get a bit of it? I don't, I have no idea what that value would be for that situation.
And, and that's it for sure. We should put together something for the first one.
Cause maybe you want, want to combine them in the same question.
Well, well, and if we're a lot more question out there.
Yeah, right.
And, and if we were looking to set a dollar value on real property, we really want to give that some thought. It's like we've seen.
Yeah, there's wide fluctuations.
While I'm doing, we'll see the value of, of real property skyrocket in the last five, 10 years, so.
I would not be in favor of putting value on the personal property.
Yeah, I think we should work towards a question for that top one.
Back some, some draft language for the next meeting to start the discussion.
I don't know if this passed, this twenty twenty, there was resolution in East Lansing where they were looking to have the power to sell any real property of value in excess of four dollars per capita with an annual inflation adjustment according to the last proceeding US census. So again, I don't think that's, that passed, but that was one way it was contemplated to be implemented. It's a dollar per capita with an inflation adjustment. I'm not necessarily in favor of that, just. Zach?
Just throwing the ring, I, I think it should the personal property is to get cut. I'd be proposing that. I would also personally like to see a consideration of language that, you know, if all seven council members say less, yes, let's sell this property. It doesn't necessarily have to go to vote, or six, you know, six of, six and seven say, yes, we want to sell this. If it doesn't receive that, then it goes to a vote.
That's, that's interesting.
A super duper majority.
That's interesting. I'd like to think about that a little bit. That's interesting. Any other questions anybody want to look at?
Yeah, I, I would just want to bring that one up specifically.
Okay, I'm gonna move on to M three.
Does council want to see this information back in some other format or with additional numbers or what, 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 what does council say is the next step for this?
They don't have an answer. We can answer in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to continue going through it. I mean, what I feel like is most immediate is just getting the relevant data to the relevant some group. So it's D W, which takes the parts, getting into arts. So those like other staff departments so that they can start figuring out how they want to use it. So, you know, even things going back to Michelle or, you know, they want to organize all that.
I think it will be interesting to, to pull out the ones related to fire station as we get to our conversation about fire station.
Also a lot of support pressures. All of them.
Mine's pretty mundane after all we've discussed. Okay, here. If you look at question twenty or any of the ones that have there, now you look at the bottom of the page, somebody tell me what the page.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's pretty easy to figure that out, but it's bugged me for a long time. It just, we just sit it on top of it and then I look at the page and by the time we're done, you know, we're on to our next one there. I mean, you can, it's a matter of formatting, I'm sure. To do it so, I would like you to press it.
Can you move to the right or left?
Say, say, they can.
Yeah, that's probably the answer.
The, the.
Or is that a foot or something else?
Well, well, that, that's the question.
Yeah.
Okay. It happens quite often.
I suppose you could make the packets be one way, make packets be unusual thing, so that any other document you're working on is always centered.
Wow, that's actually waiting.
Yeah, this is just, oh, what someone said about pulling the fire station data. Do we think it would be also relevant to pull question about taxes to go with that? Do we put those two topics together?
Then I made a question.
I don't, I mean, I'm not looking at it right now. It was just a question in there about, you know, how people feel about tax rate.
We all, you were watching our county. We're the lowest in the county. Correct, Mr. President?
I, I believe we are still the lowest city or village in the county yet.
Yeah.
For our portion of taxes.
That is, that is correct.
Thank you for us. Yes. Thanks, Marie.
And I bet you if you ask people that question, they'll all say that taxes are the highest.
I mean, it's, you know, managing expectations.
Yeah. We should understand that's such a good part of it. Set the protection.
Yeah. Well, was there questions or something?
There were, I saw it, just a few minutes.
Open ended problems.
Yeah, maybe that was it.
Well, actually, at the DDA meeting, I, I gave a summary of what we're doing and how we have a six hundred thousand dollar surplus this year. Well, it's not that number anymore, but whatever it is, it's a surplus. Phil Meek was asked with those considerations to, you know, giving some break. And Zach brought that up before, you know, do we even do we take a tenth or two tenths or something off just to show that during this time that we're conscious of, of that. So it fills a, fills a DDA member or resident. I'll, I'll report that out as, as input anyway.
I wish we weren't contemplating a village. That might be rough to go, but I'm not sure what the point of it is. They were going to knock this off on the next summer money.
I just thought it was maybe to get all the impression we have or whatever, discussions are remotely relevant to it.
Oh, yeah.
I just thought I'd pass along the comment.
Yeah. Well, we do have a question specifically about thirty forty five. So again, that's going to be coming in front of us for any person, just to make sure people have that in mind. Maybe it's not surprising. I think what I recollect is I don't think many people were indicating they wanted housing in that spot, but you. Maybe it's not surprising, I think, what I recollect is, I don't think many people were indicating they wanted housing in that spot, but you all have stuff to consider. Presumably it's because the people responding to the survey are housed in the area, and so their top of mind to that is not adding housing, but still interesting to consider.
Okay, good discussion, thanks for your work on it and preparation. Will you bring us back draft language then on the. M3, consideration of adoption of the C of Dexter 2022, 2027 capital plan resolution.
I moved resolution of adoption of 2022, 2027 capital improvement program on page 191 and 192.
Okay, motion by Mr. Michelle's.
Some basics, excuse me, you all know why we do a couple of those plans. It is something that is required for the planning commission by the Planning and Aging Act. And it's the planning officials goal, the CIP, to use as a tool to implement the city's master plan and assist in preparation of a comprehensive budget. Excuse me, planning commission did recommend approval of, well, they adapted it themselves, but they're recommending approval to City Council, so you can adapt it. The resolution is on the next page. This is a process that started in December of last year and then worked its way through March of this year. Planning Commission reviews and discusses it after each of the different departments review it and make their updates, get updates from consultants. And other staff, and as well as the different boards and commissions, specifically the Downtown Development Authority and Park Commission. The public hearing is held on May 2nd, at which time the floor was open for public comment, and unfortunately, we're, no comment. That's not unusual. The, there is a table of changes, changes in the document in this exhibit B, and you have a total of maybe three projects this year. Excuse me. Those were carried over or initiated in this year's CIP, there's a six-year funding need of $19 million. $480,000 and a first-year funding need of just under $2 million. There's a variety of funding sources that contribute to each of these different projects, complete breakdowns by funding source. You would refer to the project and the funding summary tables within the different appendices. Also, no costs, funding sources and schedules are unknown for a few of the major projects, including downtown property acquisition, downtown side improvement, fire station project, et cetera. The total six-year funding need did increase by 42% this year from last year's. Excuse me, these. The increase is due to updated cost estimates to current and near-term, near-term projects and the addition of some new projects tentatively scheduled for the end of CIP timeframe. These projects will include the Broad Street reconstruction, the Huron Farms asphalt replacement, and the Pushing Port labor mist water maintenance replacement. The, the six-year funding need. Total, as I said before, is a 19.48 thousand with the first year, excuse me, being just under two. There are several projects, like I said, that. They're near-term projects such as the city hall improvements, their Broad Street reconstruction, these projects will get finished in this fiscal year, they'll drop off in next year. The city hall probably will. If you've got any questions, comments, happy to take them, I appreciate all your feedback and input into that.
Michelle, I've got a few questions and maybe John comments, so I'm on page 11 of the CIP. And the top project that's under major projects is Huron Farms asphalt replacement.
You said.
On page 11. It's a table. Okay, so the top project, Huron Farms asphalt replacement, priority important, total cost 5.679 million. Seems like a big number, but the funding source is probably not general funds, danger county, probably a street fund.
Okay, I can, I can review that and make the corrections.
Yeah, if you could just review the table, like Huron Farms Connector is probably not major street fund. Probably general fund of some type. Or the third and broad reconstruction. I don't know if there's water main there that we're doing, but it's not the water funds, but if there's water main there, it's probably water and streets, you know, that kind of thing. Somebody needs to proofread. Yep. The funding sources again, I could, I could challenge the cost estimates, but I don't, I don't want to necessarily do that, because I assume you've got your own way of putting this in there, and I'll go with whatever's here, because we're going to update it when we need to anyway. If you go down to the next table on page 12. Where we have new projects. Is the city hall facility improvements at 120,000 a current cost? Is that a current number? I feel like we should know that number, but that seems.
It's probably not been updated.
Low. I mean, if the 5.6 million seems high for Huron Farms, but there are a lot of roads there, I guess, and depending on what the asphalt improvement is, I suppose it can be that much of its total replacement of. Every street, but. Anyway, so I think, I think reading through the funding sources and make sure they're appropriate.
Yeah, I can go back, some of these are net.
Well, one, one other thing I was gonna, I wanted to ask is, could that column be potential funding sources? Or does it have to be, well, and the reason I say that.
Potential, it could be actual.
Well, for example, like with the, you know, with the trail projects, we've been successful in applying for grants. You know, could, could you, like Mill Creek Park Phase 3 improvements, instead of saying to be determined, if that column was potential funding sources, you could say general. You know, partner with county grants, what, you know, private, whatever Huron Waterloo pathways considered, you know, there's other, I think there's other things that could be in those columns.
Yeah, and it almost looks to be up there, maybe worse than, so.
Some edits and some.
Well, yeah, I was just going to say some, some formula errors where it's going from.
I don't, I don't know how this was, you know.
It was generated quite.
I'd like that to be read through before we, I don't mind approving this tonight, but I'd like that to be just clarified, so somebody can put their eyes on it again.
Yes, definitely. I'm going to have you post on this, because as I'm looking at some of these numbers. Project numbers listed here. Okay, maybe I looked at the wrong one. I won't have it posted, it's okay. Getting a little nervous again as I'm looking at these numbers, the number here was actual project, but I looked at the wrong one.
Jimmy?
Yeah, so with this, I mean, it's a big document and there's a lot in it, and so my personal approach sort of is that I tend to defer to the different subgroups to review this for their area. And I know that City Council will have the opportunity to review this project when it comes in front of us. So with parks, I've done it, I think, twice now, looking through it, so I'm familiarated with those specific projects and along those lines. General comments just about the approach to the CIP that I think I brought up during parks, so I'm looking on page eight of the CIP and page nine, I guess, starting with page nine. These are just like, I guess, process things, so the justification score right now says, the assigned score indicates the degree to which the project helps to achieve the following value statements. Protect health, safety, lives of citizens, et cetera, but then the rating scale is not applicable, somewhat important, important, very important, so what we're, what we're being asked to do, and this came up in parks, was. What's the degree to which the project helps protect health, safety and lives of citizens, very important. Those don't match, so if you're saying the extent, if you want to know the extent to which a project does something, I think the response scale would be, you know, not applicable. Or not at all, somewhat, a little bit, very much, you see what I'm saying? That we're not being asked, how important is it that the project does this, we're saying, to what extent does the project help, you know, the degree to which the project helps to do this. Very important is the response, those don't match up, do you understand what I'm saying?
Um, I believe I understand what you're saying.
So you give a zero to three in each one of those, right?
Right, but the word very important, somewhat important doesn't match, so I found it difficult on parks to say, I mean, I, I think what you're asking is. How much does this project, how much does this project protect the health, safety and lives of citizens, how much does it maintain our public infrastructure? So if something needs to change, you're going to need to change like what the question stem is, because this is, I mean, equivalent to like the survey question, what's the question stem, are we asking? All the groups to indicate the degree to which the project does this, or are we asking them to rate the importance of those things to the project, I think just under. So somehow aligning those, so it needs something.
Yeah, I mean, you can still assign numbers to those.
Right.
Yeah, a little, somewhat, a lot.
Right. Yeah, not at all, a little, somewhat, very much, something like that.
Just making sure the response answers the question.
Right, right, and then sort of a bigger question, so I think this came up too, because I think on parks, we were kind of going through the justification score for each of the projects. And not to say that it felt. Like futile, but it just seemed like these projects were all kind of doing that-ish, and so I didn't know how meaningful the information was getting from the justification score, and so my tendency was to want to jump right away to sort of prioritize, but I think. I then learned, well, the prioritization happens in some other part of the process, so looking at page eight where it says, the priority rating of urgent, important and desirable. And then there are some ways that that's defined, a while back I had looked up and I was able to find it up again tonight, this is some guidance from, I don't know, but it's U W Stevens Point or something like that. Planning tools about capital improvements plan, capital improvement plans, and a couple of dimensions that I thought could be helpful for prioritizing these or helping people understand the rank order of these. We're somehow incorporating, what is the desired service level standard of, of a particular product, like of a, say, in the context of parks. And there may be five different parks projects you want to do, in terms of prioritizing, I think it could be helpful, and I don't know that it's incorporated this way in the plan, to say, like, how close is this park to our, you know, perfection, to our desired standard? And maybe there are a few more things we want to do there, but it's already very close versus this park is just like way not even so far from our standard, and there's one thing we want to do here, and that's going to help, you know, maybe that's the priority because. Of where we are relative to where we want to be, I think that could be useful for prioritizing things to say, you know, instead of making the smaller improvements to get something to perfect, maybe we spent, maybe we prioritize something that's going to get us the bigger difference from lower to higher. They also talk about incorporating the number of residents or geographic area served, I don't know to what extent that would be incorporated to say, well. You know, again, if you're talking about parks projects, well, this is a park that everybody's using, and so if you want to make sure, maybe even though this other park is further away from where we want to be, you know, everybody's spending time here, so maybe we want to prioritize that. Anyways, it just seemed like there could be other, I don't know when the last time this sort of process was revisited, I found. When we went through it on parks, the justification score and maybe even this prioritization doesn't seem so useful to me, and maybe we're not looking to get a very refined priority list.
Does the new software improve this?
I haven't done that kind of repeat that, my thought is that it's going to do some of what you're talking about. Set up there, I don't know, the algorithms, the right word to use.
Well, to her, to her point, we have projects that have like this justification score of 11 that are desirable, or 10 that are important.
Correct, correct.
It's very, it's very subjective, so.
It is.
And it's fluffy, that's it, I mean, Zach would probably raise his hand, tell me it's a tool, which I would hardly agree with.
Right, right.
We've always, we've always been opportunistic with them, you get them in the plan, and it is kind of like mind's eye, you know, type of thing.
Right.
The numbers, you know, get caught up in whether it's 14 or 13 every again, this one time during the year, you know, that kind of thing.
It's.
Well, and, and, and the, one of the challenges is, I mean, you know, it takes from December to almost May to, to, to get to this point, and if we add in a bunch of different. Axis on which to evaluate project, you're just extending that time, so we're right next to that, you know, a four, a four or five month time period, yes, if we have to spend this fifteen month time reevaluating a project on all these different axes every year. We're spending more time in the plan than we are actually doing the work to try and get.
And maybe it's informative enough, you know, when it's time to do it, like I said, when I look at this, I, it's a general overview, and I feel like I can give a closer eye when the time comes, and maybe it, it works for you too in that same way. And it's just, this is the general, just kind of a thing, I just know that when you're spending time in it in parks, it did feel like as something like, I don't know. But maybe that's fine.
There's certainly, we certainly, because it is a metric, the prioritization and the justification being too different, we could look at. If there are other ways. To do these, these metrics to be able to prioritize projects versus the, the. How we justify. Moving them up in the scale of whether we're going to do some of that. Nine times out of 10, it's coming down to what we stand forward to do at any time. And you could have a project that comes up at the very last minute that falls into the urgent emergency category. But its justification score is really, really low, but it's an emergency and emergency takes precedent, so. And you could have, likewise, you could have a project that's super desirable, for example, the Huron Connector is very desirable to at least one member of the planning division. And yet, the cost tag for it makes it absolutely unattainable, so. But I, I have no problem looking at this and seeing if there's a better way to communicate the information so that people understand what we're asking for. Whether it's a, whether it's mission number or if it's a general.
Why is the Huron River kayak launch so high?
I'm sorry?
Why is the Huron River kayak launch so high?
Just a second, what project number is that?
There's two of them.
That, that, that would have been a justification toward it spelled by parks.
And what's, what's the argument for protecting health, safety and lives of citizens?
What's, where did they get it?
A three. I, I, I think the, the issue right now is that they're looking at folks across the river who are climbing down a date and using an area that isn't. Officially designated as, as park area.
Okay, I can see that. All right.
And, and, and at one point that there was, there was the issue of people who were parking along the drive and were opening the doors into, into traffic.
But I mean, you know, it gets a high, it's the second highest knock score listed as desirable.
Well, right, if they're mismatches like that, then something is in.
Right, and it's always been, it's always been this way too, it's hard to. It's hard to. Reflect the perfect priority, because those priorities are different.
Like, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm saying the same thing as well, we do, we do take the time to put together tables and say, project or justification score of 15. I'm, I'm, I'm saying the same thing as well. We do, we do take the time to put together tables and say, project or justification score of fifteen. And fourteen, as if those is the ones we should focus on. We're going to put the lowest ones in there. But some of these. You know, you, you have to. I don't know that some of these should necessarily be on the list. I don't care that they're there particularly, but. I think I agree with the overall discussion on, on priorities. Okay, do we, do, does anyone see any reason not to vote on this?
Yeah, not for the late, but it, there are lots and lots of sidewalk segments in there. Um, I would like to see in the future us look at doing that more deliberately instead of waiting for the schools to come in and say, we need a bunch of sidewalks here. And we act and got Second Street, we're being proactive, but there are a lot of segments still in the downtown area where we don't have it. And I did have to, but if there was a way to describe, from your recollection, how this was put together. Marketing strategy has a score of two for public health, safety, lives of citizens. Economic development report update has a three. Fire station has a two.
So, yeah, just a second. The fire station, you need the project number, it's easier to find it.
Four oh five. But just again, I'm, I'm that guy, I'm curious how a fire station score lower than.
So I can tell you that the scores for the fire station. This is a project that's been in since twenty eleven. I don't think any of the justification or. The justification scores have been updated. Since then. So if that's something that. Council feels should have a higher justification score, we can, now would be the time to do that.
Want to be a three for the health, safety, lives.
This is your opportunity to make those changes. This is the first time you've basically seen it.
Yeah, I'm happy changing something to a three from a two, but I, you know, I think it goes back to the points we were just talking about is.
We're going to spend all this time on doing it, I'd rather it be meaningful, or like at the end, I'd rather it be something that we look at and we go, aha. Right, it's just.
You want me to go ahead and make these changes that we would talk about, not thinking the prioritization, justification, because that would be. Not just inside, but, um, excuse me, some of the comments that we've made regarding making sure that the numbers are right. And that the. The amounts on the projects are accurate. And just bring this back to you.
Postpone the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
Will we postpone the next meeting?
Moved by Michelle, seconded by Cousins to postpone the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-seven capital waste plan until the meeting on June. Thirteenth. A discussion on a move.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Yes. Okay, uh, thank you for your work on that. Appreciate you putting up with our questions on it too, so thanks.
Thank you.
The decision for consideration of resolution to apply to the, to M dot for a TED V grant program for Danboy Roadwork.
I'll move to adopt the resolution of page one ninety-five.
Motion by Griffin. Second by, so now, thank you.
So we talked at the last budget meeting about Danboy. Being a, an opportunity. For, for improvement. The middle section of Danboy is still in good shape that those rules just read it. Two years ago, two, three years ago. So this would be to improve the sections, uh, basically the tail ends for Dexter Arbor and Baker. Because Danboy doesn't qualify for federal tip funds. It still could qualify for the M dot presentation economic development program. Grant, which we have gotten in the past, I think we got in twenty fourteen, twenty sixteen percent central. Yeah. So what we're proposing is to work on Danboy starting in summer of twenty twenty-three. To do this, to do this work. It would be a reconstruct on one side and a building overlay on the other side. And then a fog seal incremental to cover over the section that.
This be our first stress absorbing number interlayer? Exciting, how about a first fog seal?
First fog, yeah, we did it my first time.
Very cool.
But the, the TED program does give additional points to. A mix of fixes. If you're, if you're proposing. Multiple types of, of work on a road segment based on needs. You get additional points for that, so.
We throw cobblestone in there to max our points somewhere. Cobblestone crosswalks. Okay.
You're listed as interim in the resolution.
So we can work that.
Good catch. Where is that? I don't see it. Okay, Mr. Campbell, just call the vote.
Yeah. Yes, Michelle.
Yes. Yes.
Cover, yes.
Yes, motion carries. Last new business item, number five, discussion of Dexter Harbor Road speed limit.
So we had talked a little while back about, we had received a request from a resident. To look at the speed limit on Dexter Harbor Road between Danboy and the city limits, just outside, outside of Carrington. We were asked to, to evaluate getting a speed study performed. We did ask Wucheng for a vote to, to do that speed study, but kind of in the interim, we put our. Speed limit sign that has some speed radar out at Dexter Harbor Road and pointed it in each direction. For a few weeks on Dexter Harbor. And Patrick, I think, can speak to any kind of results of that and. Some recommendation to drop that section down to forty.
Thank you, Justin. So we basically outlined in the memo earlier this year was, we did that speed study. We basically go collect the data and whatever the speed study could deal with, that injection worked with law enforcement to do that. Whatever the results are is really what the recommendation would be to establish. We kind of suspected that likely, probably not yield in our favor, and basically when. The sign is put up there, especially speeds coming in town, we look at the, basically the data. The point we look at is the eighty-fifth percentile, and then whatever that is, that is really what the speed limit should be. If I recall correctly, I think we were basically seeing about fifty-three miles an hour at the particular location where the sign is placed. So really, we could go forward with that speed study, basically say it is the state of the way it is. There's, in fact, with our traffic engineer, though. It's permitted, especially as you're coming to town, you're basically coming down Dexter Harbor at fifty miles an hour, then it goes thirty-five, then it goes twenty-five. You are permitted to kind of put interim speed signage in place, basically to say, so it's, you might go from fifty to forty to thirty, that type of thing. So the feeling was is that it will, in doing the speed study, the desired. Outcome of this whole thing was to really get people slowing down as quickly as they come to town. So that's the recommendation. Rather than doing the speed study, but we know it's going to result in basically, to me, the state of the way it is. We could support having that forty mile an hour sign placed, really kind of encouraged slowing down.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, yeah, I guess I'm not surprised if this speed limit is fifty. I mean. I get why we tried to see how fast people were going. I mean, I guess the reason not to do it is if people were already slowing down. I'm not surprised people are not slowing down, given the posted speed limit is fifty. So I think if what, the concern is that people are going too fast. And comfortable lowering it. There is a spot, I think it's on Miller Road as you get into Ann Arbor. Where basically it does the same thing. I think it's fifty, and I'm trying to look here now where it goes under forty, it's maybe right around the. Fourteen over pass where it goes to forty before it goes to thirty-five. So, and I think you said we have the same thing on Baker Road, right?
Yeah, I think it goes down to forty-four.
Forty?
Forty-five.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what, what he's saying is if we do the official study, we're naturally able to lower it, right?
Right, which is interesting, I mean.
So.
I don't know why that would be the method, because why would you expect to get a result different than what posted speed limit is?
Well, that was kind of. We basically, yeah, it was kind of, that's why we wanted to get the speed sign out there is like, let's just, you know, there's. Other than setting it up, we know effort through. With itself, it's just, we'll get the data and look at it, okay, yeah, it's what we thought, let's just go there.
I would say if we change it, we do what we did again, put it out and see. I would love it to drop to forty a little bit sooner, but I don't think we have control over that, so.
Well, so, so, so my, my goal is to get to reach out to one of my local mission to ask them if we can place a. Speed limit reduced sign in, in their right of way in advance of where.
Yeah, thank you. I think another thing to me was the location of where that sign was. Because for those who are coming down to then turn left with Dexter Crossing, we have to slow down. Before we, we get to that, otherwise we can't even, you know, safely enough get to the middle. Which a lot of times with the speed of the car behind us, so I, I do that like. Three, four times a day, right? Every time when I get there, I have to very quickly, even before the. Yellow lines of the middle fully allowed to get sort of in the middle to let the cars behind me. That are still speeding to go. And a lot of times, actually, they get. Angry, and when I am passed, they are even slamming onto the gas to even go for the little bit that they can go before they get to thirty-five. So I, I think if, if the sign was a little bit behind and closer to where. Or before you get to Dexter Crossing, you might have seen slower. I don't know what is the range of what we can pick up. Of, um, people slowing down, but I'm really in favor of, of that. Of dropping to forty, that area, and if there is a sign that can be put that reduced. I would be, I would think that it would be very helpful for all the traffic that goes through Dexter Crossing.
Those are all. And, sorry, those are all.
Zach, for the, for the speed study, this may not be. Is there a requirement for where the speed is taken in the segment, at both ends of the segment or in the center? My, I'll say that by saying my observations are that if the speed study was taken much closer to the Danboy intersection, the speeds would be noticeably lower. Than if they were in the middle or farther out, because people going out of town, half the time they're going to be stopped for a light, and the other half. The time people coming down are slowing in, slowing down or stopping for a light, versus if it's a hundred fifty yards down the road, they're going to be to speed. I think that certainly matters to your point about where it's at, and you want, I think ideally you want to be in a free flow condition. So basically away from the influence of any traffic control, which. At least fifty percent of the movements are going to be affected by the traffic lane. So I think the goal would be to try to push that probably near the driveway with extra bouncing. I'd say I, I'd be in favor of setting it to forty-five. I think forty, the transition. Folks who drive there and make the turn are going to know it's forty, and you're going to start slowing down, but people just coming in, it doesn't feel like it's forty. It still feels like you're in town. So I think forty-five is, is a modest, appropriate drop. And I say this because when I drove from university back home, I had to go through the segment of twenty-seven. Where it went from an expressway to fifty-five, and the cop was sitting right there at the end to get people who weren't aware of that change.
In St. John's?
Yes, yes. I had some pulled over on that same segment too.
I've got to take a third bite.
Yeah, so I, I prefer to, to have it fit expectations, but I will say that I would also be interested in seeing what we could do to reduce the length of the turning lanes. For Dexter Crossing. That's really long for the, the shopping center there, when you're going out of town. I don't know how many people they thought were going in there. That's like a Palace of Auburn Hill size turning lane there. And I think reducing that and pulling the curb in will naturally cause folks to drive more slowly. That's why.
Yeah, I was just going to say on the flip side, I think the. This time you have to turn, so if you're coming into town Dexter and Arbor Road, where it creates that left turn lane for you, that is super short. And the way it's lined right now, oh, this is twenty eighteen Google Street View, I mean, it starts, you know, it does like it's beating to grow that left turn lane. And it's a double line for a long time, so you're not even legally able to enter that until it becomes dashed, and it becomes dashed. Immediately outside of the neighborhood. Is there any way to get more dashes in that turn lane so you're actually legally able to enter it to slow down? Um, or what is, I don't know, I'm sure there were regulations and recommendations and things like that, but. I mean, I think if people were able to get over to the left, I mean, I personally am not very concerned about this, even though I do turn into that neighborhood. I think lots of other people have to turn off a fifty mile an hour road into their driveway, when you're the car behind you, you just have to slow down and wait for it. At the same time, I don't really see harm in doing it, but if we're looking at this as in, you know, a big picture, I'd be interested to know about this left turn lane. And is that adequate, the amount of dashed line space to actually get into it to slow down? It doesn't seem like it is.
Though probably back to when all this was developed in the nineties. Probably traffic control, traffic study is done, that basically determine whatever that, that might need is to be, now we see the traffic volumes are a lot different now. They were back in ninety-seven, so it is possible it may not be. You know, storage in that area. But in general, you know, if you wanted to, we could study that a little further. I could, it's probably a conversation for traffic engineers to see. Beats best practice. As I look at it, it looks like there's at least three or four car lengths of stacking, which should be enough. It does kind of come up anyway quickly, but we'll say that. And to your point, Council of Michelle's. Conversely, it seems like there's excessive right turn popping, going in pushes. It's kind of always.
Well, if you can check on the left turn lane. We want to ask the manager to work with Wucheng to draft up a draft TCO first review. I don't really care if it's forty or forty-five. I think that's the way to go, is try and get, try, try to get people to slow down. I do think living in a turn lane is warranted. I'm sure the road committee will come up and modify. Did they paint it for us, by the way, for free?
They did, yeah.
Have we not adopted this one?
Yeah, we did.
We did. They, 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 they both two chicks sealed it in by a strict. They, 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 they both took, took steel to the line for us.
We were behind them. We were the second car behind them as they were painting, just, I don't know what day it was, just the other day. The car in front of me passed. Them as they were painting and I thought.
And they got nice colorful lines all over. All over the place.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we have a direction. Thank you for your work on that, Patrick. Sure. Not leading us into a study that would have given us that result at all. So I appreciate. Okay, we are on to page four, council comments. Wow, I will start with you this evening.
Well. Well, there was a very nice memorial last weekend for my wife and. We guessed about two hundred and twenty people. Things went really very well until three o'clock when we were gonna was spreading ashes in the rain. So. Guess I went down next day and spread the ashes around. Markley, a friend of my son, he had planted a close to a thousand tulips. They were in full bloom as well. So it's not. So the statue is there and it, it's really very, very nice. He's in there waiting for the plaque. And there was just, we had a lot of people that came. In transit, I didn't expect to be there. They were there and others that were there that they weren't there. I expected to be there, but it was really, really nice. My son spoke some neat little jokes about mine.
Nice. So last week I attended Michigan Association of Planning Housing Summit Institute thing. My takeaway was. It was kind of nice being from City of Dexter there because we are in a lot better position than many other places with respect to housing and stock and options. And we're doing a lot of things that other places aren't. The best practice are like, yeah, we're doing that, we're doing that, we're doing that. The downside is that we are also have tremendous outside pressures from Ann Arbor that a lot of places don't have. So even though we're doing things really well. It's not showing as effective as it would otherwise. One really interesting fact that I took away is they they showed. Uh, permits for dwelling units in Michigan since nineteen twenty or something. And they had fifteen years from two thousand six to twenty twenty-one and the fifteen years before that. From nineteen ninety-one to two thousand six, the lowest year, the lowest number of permits for dwelling units that were constructed in Michigan. Was higher than the highest year from two thousand six to two thousand twenty-one. So the entire state is in a huge hole. And it's not that just the population is increasing, but the household size is decreasing. So there are more units needed for the same number of people. But it was generally nice that that we got to to do that, that I got to see we're doing a lot of things well. I am after here going to go home, throw a bag in my car and drive to Chicago for the fire design conference. Either tomorrow or Wednesday, I'm gonna have a sit down with with architects to look at the plans. If anyone has specific questions, let me know. Probably text is the best. Can also find a way to do video. So if you want to be there without traveling four hours by car tonight, we can do that too. Probably Instagram because I'm dumb and don't know other video things and I don't have an Apple. That's it. And and I hope the students will. Let us know that none of the seniors froze to death last night in the tent city. And give us an update on how the parking adventures were this morning. That's it.
I'm smiling. I don't know what that means.
I didn't get a chance to say to the students who are here, but I appreciate that. Young people are created, they saw a problem and they took the initiative to do something about it. So I'd like that to be part of the record.
Well, great comments.
Squinty outside. I have no comments.
Okay, we are back around and not arranged participation. If you would like to say anything from the audience, anyone in the audience wants. Probably not. Anyone online, please raise your hand if you'd like to speak under not arranged. Not seeing them, I have a three. Okay, we'll adjourn the meeting. At thirty-six. So motion for adjournment, please. Moved by Sanam, seconded by Jamie. All is in favor, second private saying aye please. Aye. As opposed, thank you everyone. Happy.
Great.